Everybody, welcome to our September tenth board meeting. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Garment.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new food service director through Char Wells, you know, Claire Lopez. And just maybe a little overview of Claire and personnel updates, and I just wanted to highlight a couple things. She does have a Bachelor of Arts in Culinary Management and a certificate in Cuisine and Culture from Institute de Beau Coupes. Is that right?
No.
And Lyon, France, which, do you know how to use my address? So, I appreciate that. But fifteen years of experience in food service industry, eight years in K-12, and she started August twenty-second and has already made great accomplishments in our food service. She's making some changes that are very positive and is just very pleasant to work with. So, we want to welcome you, and if there's anything you ever need, the board is tremendously supportive always, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to the other, Mr. Garment.
Oh, my, I don't have much to say about that. As a former French major, and that's a little upsetting, but we're going to go on with that. For those of you that haven't been here before, this is the best time, no offense to the rest of the information that we get at a board meeting, but this is the time we get to honor our Students of the Month and our Athletes of the Month. And this is why we're here, this is why we meet, this is why we do what we do. It's for these kids and these amazing kids. So, we're going to start off, we're going to start off slightly different. We are going to start with South, first time I'm going to say this publicly, South Grove Elementary School, and for our principal, Ms. Cotter. And then, Ms. Cotter, you're feel free to, maybe Mr. Carr can follow, and we can go from there. When, for you students, when you've been honored, and we're clapping, we're so happy, we will take a photo underneath that darling hornet. So, I'll come up, get a photo, and then the next one will come. After, we're going to take a break, you can get family photos, you can get more photos with the principals, more photos with friends, however you want to do. So, South Grove Elementary School principal, Stephanie Cotter, come on up.
Official business first.
You're excited.
Is he smiling? He has the best smile, right? I know, I know. Good evening, everyone. This is, this is Mr. Dwayne Corbin, and Dwayne is a fourth grader at South Grove Elementary School. He was nominated by his homeroom teacher, Mrs. Kaufman. Mrs. Kaufman is in the crowd there. Thanks for joining us. She said, "I am nominating Dwayne for Student of the Month because he is such a delightful student and human. Dwayne exemplifies our pledge. He demonstrates respect, or, ew, excuse me, responsibility and respect, as well as pushes himself to try his personal best every day. He is so kind to every student and staff member he encounters. He works so hard each and every day, trying his absolute best and pushing himself to grow. He gives his teammates great feedback that is kind, specific, and helpful, and you can tell that he wants them to achieve their personal best as well. I just thoroughly enjoy having him in my classroom, and the students do too. I am so blessed to be his teacher." Then we had Mrs. Minton, his second grade teacher, who said, "Oh, sweet Dwayne, I had Dwayne in first grade at Hornet Park and was able to move up with him to second. That boy leads with his heart. He is kind, smart, and gives his best effort in everything he does. So proud of him." Another second grade teacher, Ms. Minton, said, "When I had Dwayne in second grade, he was absolutely amazing. He loved to be challenged and did everything with a smile on his face. I remember every morning, when I would greet him at the door, he would always give me a compliment to brighten my day. It's been awesome seeing him in fourth grade, continuing to show respect and responsibility as he gets older. I'm proud of the student he is now and will continue to become throughout the years." Dwayne's other fourth grade teacher, Ms. Swain Scott, said, "Dwayne is the sweetest and hardest working student. He strives for success in his academics and constantly participates. Not only is he an excellent student, but also an outstanding friend. Dwayne is always happy for everyone around him, and he's always willing to help a friend in need. Dwayne, from my personal experience, is a truly amazing young man. As mentioned above, he is a helpful friend and always willing to jump in. One of the first days this year, we were getting ready for dismissal, it was car rider, and the weather was a little sketchy. We were looking out there, and Dwayne says, "Should we wait? You want to go grab an umbrella, Ms. Cotter?" I was like, "Oh, you're fine, we got to get this car rider line rolling." Sure enough, about twenty minutes later, when I walked in soaking wet, I said, "Oh, I should have listened to Dwayne." The next morning, this boy sought me out and said, "How bad was it, Ms. Cotter?" He is so stinking sweet and just such a good human, as Mrs. Kaufman said. We are so proud of you, buddy, and hope that you continue to do great things. Congratulations.
Unfortunately, our Student of the Month isn't able to make it, but I'd still like to take the opportunity to just read what his teachers were able to write about him. Our Student of the Month is Mr. Donald Jackson, and in talking with Ms. Cotter, it's no shock that he was, I guess, a central Student of the Month when he was in second or third grade. Just, Donald is currently enrolled in our high ability courses with Mr. Laker and Mr. Reeves. Mr. Laker said, "What makes Donald so awesome? Donald participates in class without fail, he works hard to complete his assigned tasks and work, and always strives to do his very best. He's a great role model for other students, showing them how to be kind and compassionate. Donald is truly a great student." And that was from Mr. Laker. Mr. Reeves, Donald's math and science teacher. "Donald is kind to his peers, compliant with expectations of the school, respectful staff, and always eager to learn. He's always engaged with what we're working on in class, willing to ask clarifying questions to further his personal growth, and takes the necessary steps to ensure he's successful with learning new skills and concepts. When work initially seems challenging, he perseveres and keeps working through the challenges to overcome them. Donald has the characteristics that embody loving where you learn, and he's the type of kid that makes it easy to love where you teach." And that was from Mr. Reeves. So, sorry you guys couldn't meet Donald today, but he's an awesome kid, and I'll present him as goods. So, thanks.
It is my privilege to be the one that gets to introduce Beach Grove Middle School Student of the Month, Ms. Kendall Curlin. So, I'm so privileged to be able to do this because, you know, one, a part of our school mission statement is creating opportunities for growth, and one of the core values in Beach Grove City Schools is growth, embracing challenges to be better tomorrow than we are today. And so, when Kendall first got to us last year, as you can imagine, new school, new surroundings, getting acclimated, we needed a little bit of help along the way, and I got to be the one, I found out really quickly that through the sharing of a Hostess chocolate cake, I called home to make sure. Yeah, that became kind of our meetings, we would share a Hostess chocolate cake, we would work through some of the new obstacles at our new school, and she just continued to get better and better. You can clap, buddy, she did amazing, absolutely. She just continued to show just a tremendous amount of growth socially and academically. So, this is from Ms. Eckstein, Kendall's English Language Arts teacher. She says, "Kendall comes to English Language Arts class daily with a smile on her face. She's always willing to work hard and go the extra mile. She's diligent in her work ethic and models perfect behavior. Kendall wants to succeed and goes above and beyond to meet her goals. She is a Model Hornet student." So, please, please join me in congratulating Kendall for a great accomplishment. I get to sign this right here. And we get to take a picture here shortly. Okay, there you go. And which one is the star? Got it. She got the star.
We'll report back to Mr. Garment.
Hornet Park is pleased to announce our Student of the Month is Scarlett Gorley. Come on up, Scarlett. Scarlett was an extremely popular choice at Hornet Park. She was nominated by her speech teacher, Mrs. Stoltz, and a lot of people came to me and let me know how proud they were of her and what a great choice they thought she was. She has done a very good job of being a leader at Hornet Park and is someone that all the kindergartners and first graders can look to. So, I'm going to read some of the nice things because I got a lot, and they're going to call her Sweet Scarlett throughout this. Just Sweet Scarlett, here we go. "Sweet Scarlett has been through so much but is still smiling constantly, working hard and being kind to others. She is so much fun to have in class and brightens a lot of friends' days." Mrs. Gillespie. "Sweet Scarlett has come so far. She has learned to be a model student, she listens to her teacher, does her work, and is kind to her friends. She has become a leader at Hornet Park, and we are so proud of her. Her smile lights up the whole room, and she gives the best hugs. Scarlett has a wonderful family that loves and supports her. Thanks to her family, she is thriving and learning at HP and is lucky to be a part of it all." Mrs. Reed. "I have loved getting to know Scarlett in my first grade class this year. She begins each day with a big smile and a positive attitude. Scarlett is such a kind friend to others and gives her best effort on everything she does. I am honored to have Scarlett in my class. She is an incredible gift to Hornet Park and those around her. I can't wait to see all she accomplishes this year." Mrs. Hammack. She's the only one that hasn't called you sweet yet. We're going to have to bring that up tomorrow. "Scarlett has made amazing growth with her speech over the years. I'm so proud of her. When she first started kindergarten, she was very difficult to understand. Now, she can have a conversation and understand most of what she says. She is such a hard worker and tries her best in speech. She's willing to correct her speech sounds when provided feedback and always does it with a smile, just like we're seeing right now. Scarlett has such a good attitude and a wonderful personality. She is a joy to work with." Mrs. Stoltz. Sweet Scarlett. She is always happy. Scarlett is a good friend and has such a can-do spirit, she has the best smile. Mrs. Wright. And Mrs. Stone from last year says, "When Scarlett is a student in your class, it's an honor. Scarlett is sweet, she turned it around, kind, loving, and such a fighter. Her smile lights up the room, and her hugs make the world a better place. I got to build the best relationship last year with Scarlett, and it was amazing to watch her grow and develop into a wonderful and hard-working human and student. It's going to be so awesome to watch her continue to grow up into an amazing woman. Scarlett, I love you so, so much, and I am proud of you each day and will always be your biggest cheerleader." Ms. Stone. Way to go, Scarlett.
Thank you.
So, I want to share comments from two of her teachers. First, her nominating teacher, Mr. Bush. Mr. Bush shares that Faith is an exemplary choice to represent Beach Grove High School as a Student of the Month. She embodies the values of our school system and exemplifies the traits we wish to see in all of our students. Faith is not only an outstanding math student, but she is also a relentless learner. Despite experiencing visible anxiety with math, she consistently perseveres, advocates for herself, seeks regular feedback, and pushes for a deeper understanding of every problem that she encounters. Rather than opting for an easy senior year, Faith has challenged herself with a full load of AP and dual credit courses. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom as she serves as the president of the National Honor Society and is a committed leader in both the FFA and the varsity soccer team. Most importantly, Faith is known for her kindness, respectfulness, and her willingness to help others, making her a role model for her peers. I also want to share comments from Mr. Bullock, who is here this evening, her FFA and ACT teacher. "Faith is the most determined student I have ever had. If she wants something, she finds a way. Faith has been a five-year FFA member, currently serves as the Beach Grove High School chapter president. She received her FFA state degree as a junior and currently pursuing an FFA American degree. Mr. Bullock has had the pleasure of working with Faith as an agricultural student and an FFA member at Beach Grove City Schools since she was in eighth grade. This is Faith's fifth year participating in FFA and taking an ACT class. Faith's interest in excelling and willingness to participate has made her a pleasure to work with. Faith has spent multiple weeks outside the classroom in an effort to experience extracurricular activities as well. During her time at Beach Grove City Schools, Faith has grown both academically and socially. She is an incredible asset to our life science program at Beach Grove Schools and serves as a mentor for all the underclassmen. It is rare to see such a young person with the intelligence and ambitions to know what they want to do and what they want to achieve and what they need to do to achieve it. There's no doubt that if Faith continues on this path, she will make a substantial contribution to the higher education community, whatever it is that she ultimately decides to do. Faith, it is the honor of naming you Beach Grove High School Student of the Month. Congratulations." Which one? Nope, leave him alone. There it is. The rookies.
Now, we are going to do our Athletes of the Month. Coach Collins is going to start us off.
Just like to state, this is not fair. Send the rookie up here for this. This is the first time I'm doing this for an Athlete of the Month for the golf program. Coach Collins, been doing this for four years at the high school level. I took over the girls' and boys' program. So, I selected Doris here for... She's stepped it up pretty much this year. She's a great athlete, but also a great student first, student-athlete. You have to be a student to be a great athlete? Is that how it works? Okay. If you don't know Doris, you can hear her any time, walking down the hallway. You can hear her pretty well. She likes to help out everybody. But this year, she's stepped it up, why I've been in the golf program. She had an opportunity to make All-Conference. She came close this year, finished tenth out of the whole conference. Today, she finished twenty-sixth today at Marion County, out of seventy-five girls. So, she's doing very well this year. She has got high goals to make it to sectionals now, so, I want to thank you for playing golf. Let me coach you.
So, our one other Athlete of the Month couldn't be here because is participating in a tennis match. So, that is Christian Lozano, and we will be honoring him. Mr. Daniel is going to get with him tomorrow, get a photo, and we'll make sure he's on social media and in our next blast. And our final Athlete of the Month, Coach Messer. You want to go ahead and come up here and introduce?
Last thing, the athletes.
Hello, good evening.
I'm Coach Messer, Coach Adam, Assistant Cross Country and Track Coach here at the high school. This is my second year with the cross country program, and this will be my third year in the spring with the track program. And I'm here to present Lila with Athlete of the Month for May, which would have been last track season. Come on up, Lila. Okay, so, back to May. Lila was a freshman on our track team last year, immediately came in and made a positive impact as far as leadership, working hard, doing the right thing, volunteering to do the events that no one else wanted to do, the TUMO being one of them. And she was on fantastic track to do fantastic all year long. We had a little hiccup in the middle of the season with a foot injury that sidelined us for about a week or so. With how hardworking she is and eager to get back to the team, we were able to get back and end the season on a high note. She was able to run a double PR, which is her personal record or personal best, at sectionals, the last meet of the season that year. So, we were able to end on a high note. Overall, it was still a fantastic year, even with the hiccup. She's done great, she's immediately stepped up for us in the spring and became a varsity member of the track team and scored points in conference, things of the sorts. She also runs cross country. I know this is a track-related award, but I cannot talk about how fantastic she's doing in cross country as well. So, we are, you know, writing things right now with her second year of cross country as a sophomore, and on top of that, you know, she's dropped more time currently than any girl on the team, and that's just a tribute to all the hard work she does. With her being a three-sport athlete, I've always kind of preached to her, you know, with all sports, it's you get out what you put in, especially with distance running, though. So, she absolutely has the toughness to, you know, she has the toughness that it takes to be a successful distance runner. I'm super fortunate to be able to coach her twice every year. She's done great things, I think she'll, I know she'll continue to do great things. Coach Keely, who is not here, who is the head coach of the cross country and track team, him and I, we couldn't be more proud of everything she's done and everything she will continue to do. So, again, couldn't be more proud and super deserving. Lila Muffler, shout out.
So, with that, we do come to the time that if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can. Well, we are going to take a break, though, and if you'd like to get photos with principals, assistant principals, coaches, family, I will say there's also some Love Where You Learn shirts. I think we're down to large, extra-large, maybe two XL, but those are free if anybody still needs some shirts. And if you don't have, can't find one, you can also come to the admin office, and we do have some more. Anything else we need to do right now? Okay, thank you so much. 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 Okay, thank you so much.
[applause] 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 [applause]
All right, there's just a few things I wanted to highlight for those listening. If you listen to NPR, you might have been shocked to hear Beach Grove Middle, or Beach Grove High School mentioned, and it was a really nice piece just about Indiana State law and what the kids are thinking about the Selkton law. It was very, very well-spoken kids, teachers, so that was, that was a nice piece. It was, we weren't the only school. I actually think there was Colorado was on that and Utah. There's several different iterations of this, of this piece. There's long versions, short versions, but it's pretty neat to kind of hear on a national stage. We began our first Hornet Hero and we had 25 nominations, and our first one is Coach Amy Selk. And we were able to surprise her and we're going back Thursday to do a little, I'm going to do a little video package with Dr. Hammack, may do a little bit of fun at a practice, but we also have, I also have an article that will come out on social media and in The Blast honoring Coach Selk. So she will be our first ever Hornet Hero for, we'll say, the month of September. And the last thing, I just want to kind of draw your attention to, we did add another, we discussed this last session, another Contact Us button essentially still leads to the same place, but we're seeing a really nice, I think it's nice, I'm seeing an uptick on communication to our website, and it has been easy at least to figure out where to send it to. Some of it is just questions, some are concerns. We are, our goal is to always get it within about 12 hours and so far, it's been working really well. It's just another place that someone can voice a concern that we will get and then we can address, just another option. And I think those are kind of my highlights. Any questions on those things? Those are just kind of a brief, brief summary.
Mr. Garmin.
First, just requesting approval of the submitted personnel report and a few other updates real quickly. We have whittled our list of job openings down considerably, so we are looking for an administrative assistant at the high school. We have still a special ed paraprofessional that we are in the process of hiring, a math teacher that Mr. Austin is working on currently, and then we're always looking for bus monitors and bus drivers. I wanted just to thank again our partners that helped make the We Before Me Enterprises possible. We just had such great support from them and I just wanted to recognize them one last time. Indiana Members Credit Union, Performance Services, AAA Roofing, Commercial Service, Boys to Men, Crossroads Engineering, Beach Grove Drug Free Coalition, Beach Grove Education Foundation, Ellis Mechanical, King Enterprises, Lowe's, and Light Matters Promotions. They all were significant contributors to We Before Me Enterprises, which is up and running. I talked to Jeremy a little bit today and they're starting to figure out the silk screen machine, so if there's anybody that, you know, is looking for products, please send them their way. I wanted to also again thank Crossroads Engineering and the Beach Grove Promoters Club. They donated between them $2,000 to help support our robotics programs at Central and the middle school, and because of that, they allowed me to be able to write a grant for a K-12 robotics grant through the IDOE for $10,800, which hopefully we will get. I should find out here next week, but you have to have some matching funds, so them stepping up to the plate and giving us some money is really, really nice and we appreciate that very much. And then on the food service, I did introduce to you Clara and gave you a little bio there of her, but also wanted, in case you got community questions, we've had a few calls about the free and reduced lunch form. So if you are a CEP school, which that is what gives us the free breakfast and lunch, the state's been working on a new form for that because it really, free and reduced lunch applications don't apply once you have the CEP designation. So they did come out with a new form. It will also include SUNBucks, which I think you might be familiar with that program. It's the summer grocery program where they get an EBT card if you qualify, so that'll be tied to this application. So that's been done and Skyward is actually working now on creating that electronically to put into the Skyward system, so parents will be able to access that, and then it'll download directly into Skyward, so all that data is there for the state to pull. So that should be, I hope, they said that their next update that will, should be ready, so in case you'd have to have questions, that, there's a new form and it is going to be available soon. And that's all I have.
Janice and Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Dr. Hammack?
Thank you. So I just wanted to mention, highlight one piece of my report. A couple of different topics were addressed in it, but the one that I wanted to announce publicly, just to make sure that our, our community understands, that this month is a true celebration in that we are thrilled to be finalizing our TSL grant at the end of this month. So that means that our performance-based compensation payouts are going to be issued here in September, and not only will our certified teachers, those who were rated as effective or highly effective, but also our principals and assistant principals will be receiving the performance-based compensation as a result of that grant. We are of course sad to see the TSL grant go away. That grant is of course the only way that we are able to afford performance-based compensation, but as we talked about, and by the way, thank you for your engagement at the work session two weeks ago. That was wonderful, wonderful work. We are kind of mobilizing our thoughts on how the great work that happened within TSL can potentially be applied in this new opportunity that we have from the Lilly Endowment. So lots of thinking there. Tonight in the work session, I have a document for you all to review. It is our planning grant application for the Lilly Endowment Grant. Rob will leave your signature on it, and then we are going to get that submitted tomorrow. It is due on Friday and the process begins, so we are, we are very encouraged and excited about that. But as far as updates, that's all that I have for you all this evening.
Can I get a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Stack Performance Evaluation Plan? April?
Beth's, Beth's second.
Beth on the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, budget hearing process.
Right, so we have made it to this very special time of the year. It is Julie season, she loves it, she wakes up, she can't wait, but she has pulled together all sorts of information for your consideration in advance of this meeting, and Julie, I think you can kind of talk through each of our actions and then Rob will call for the approvals.
Okay, so the budget hearing process is, I'll just say a couple of things here on separate types of funds. Our operating referendum fund, we are expecting a small increase in property tax dollars in 2025 due to increased assessed value. Last year, the legislature enacted legislation to cap the increase on this fund at 3%, even if assessed value goes up beyond 3%. So last year it went up, I think about 16 or 17%. This year it went up seven, but they do cap that at three. The referendum debt service fund is used for high school upgrades, long-term expenses for HVAC renovations, et cetera. We were able to maintain the education fund budget this year because of the 2025 tuition support formula. Our operations fund gets no property tax because of the circuit breaker, so we will be transferring money from the education fund to pay for those expenses, and we are allowed to transfer 15%, and we usually are right at 15%. The pension debt fund is used for teacher retirement debt. This fund is affected by the circuit breaker also. Good news, the final payment will be this December 2024, so that one comes off. Debt service fund pays for all of our bonds and leases. In 2025, we'll have no new debt or no new bond or lease issued. This fund is also affected by the circuit breaker. Because our circuit breaker is more than our operations fund levy, they have to take away money from our debt service, so. Rainy day fund, no change is expected. We always put in a budget just in case we need to use one, but we usually try not to use that fund. And then after the Department of Local Government Finance finalizes our 2025 budget, we expect final tax rates to be lower than 2024 because of some of the stuff that's falling off and that's all I have for the budget hearing process.
Can I get a motion to open the 2025 budget hearing? Beth? Is that April?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Comments from the public? We have none. Anybody? All right. Can I get a motion to close the 2025 budget hearing?
I'll make said motion.
Tara?
Second.
Janice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And bus replacement hearing, is that, um, you?
No, it's still me.
Okay.
It's okay. Number two, so the bus replacement plan is a five-year plan. We are planning on buying two buses in 2025, therefore we submitted that we could buy two buses each year to replace our aging fleet. We are allowed to update this plan every year even though it is a five-year plan. It gets posted on the website and on, in Gateway.
I'll move to open the bus replacement hearing. All second.
April, Jill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And open comments for that? Obviously none. Can I get a motion to adopt the 2025 bus replacement plan? April, second?
All second.
Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the 2025 bus replacement plan?
No motion.
All second.
Janice and Tara, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now let's move on to Capital Projects Hearing.
Okay, and the Capital Projects Plan is a three-year plan. We included purchases for equipment, technology, and safety for all of our buildings for all three years. This plan can also be updated every year and is on the website and in Gateway.
I'll move to open the 2025 Capital Projects Plan.
April? Jill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Comments? Motion to adopt the 2025 Capital Projects Plan hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Tara? Jill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And can I get a motion to close?
All second.
Beth, Janice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Gearhart?
So because of those things, we have to be judicious and sometimes have to wait until things are absolutely crumbling before we adopt. That's the case in Central Intermediate. There were two concrete pads in the back that were absolute disasters waiting to happen, and concrete's expensive, so we replaced those a couple of weeks ago. Also, we are going to replace all of our security cameras on our buses.
Oh, good.
I believe we got rid of the last VCR technology a few years ago, but we have very old antiquated DVR technology that doesn't work so good when it's hot and doesn't work so good when it's cold. So we're buying replacement technology that is plug-and-play, that when we get rid of a bus, we can take it out, put it in the new bus, so it's something real good for us, good protection for our kids and everyone else. And last week, we were awarded the Safe and Secured Schools Grant that we've gotten for the last several years. They had over $9 million in requests to be, so everybody got cut a little bit, but I think every dollar that we get helps support our SRO program. So we got funded, we were, last year we got funded $100,000. They cut our funding to $81,000 this year. So that's it for me.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes and claims? Thank you, April.
All second.
Tara, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then you said August, or you said? Quotes, bids, donations, purchases. Can I get a motion to approve the fundraisers? And let's go ahead and throw in the field trips.
I had one question on fundraisers, so for, I believe it was South Grove, there was a fundraiser for student incentives. What does, what does that mean exactly? Is that like, did like rewards for students or is it something else like? Okay.
Yeah, so the JoJo Store for any, really anything that we put on, attendance awards, student of the month, prizes, all the things. So instead of, we used to ask the parents for money directly for those things, instead we do fundraisers and then we use the, and supply.
Thank you. I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
Motion to approve the fundraisers.
I'll make said motion.
Brian? Jill, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then let's go ahead and do separately, a motion to approve the field trips.
All motion.
Janice?
All second.
Beth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Community reports, I think Jill has good news tonight.
We have to run the superintendent, you know, annual review process, so that's always super fun to start working on. We should be getting our numbers for your enrollment for new school in, so it should be nice and firm since school's been in place. They have hired a new, they had a problem keeping nursing instructors, and so they finally think they found one that's going to fit, and so that should be grand. And other than that, that's really, oh, it will be setting the fee schedule for rental for the new commons space, which is the community area, so hopefully some revenue will be able to be brought in for that to help just the school in general. So that's basically all I have.
We have our C9 superintendent meeting tomorrow.
For member superintendent success stories.
I'll mention something just casually, so I was wearing my Love Where You Learn shirt last weekend at the cross-country meet, and somebody came up and said, I just love what that says and I love those shirts, so I wanted to, you know, say thank you for that. It seems like a really good message, and they said they saw the billboards, they've seen things around city, so, yeah.
Have you seen my parking spot?
Is it decorated that way?
So the admin team surprised me this week by having our students paint a spot and it says, "Love Where You Learn," and it says, "Reserved for Dr. Hammack." It might be the cutest thing I've ever seen, ever. It's about, yeah, it was awfully, awfully sweet. Thank you. Touched my heart. Yeah, super, super sweet. I don't even want to park on it because getting it dirty, it's so good.
If we have nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I can make said motion.
Brian? April, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:23.